Recording in progress.
Do we go back?
No, it's just the minutes. I'll just include them.
Okay, I'll make the motion. We approve the special meeting minutes of January 23rd.
I'll second.
Oh, no, sorry. Those are the minutes that seem to be...
Make a motion. Do we approve the meeting minutes of January 30th?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make the motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Anything to add, Michael?
No.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public input.
Seems like none at this time. They're waiting for deliberative session, I guess.
Consideration of new business. Nothing?
None at this time.
Have we fixed our own business?
Any preparations needed for the forthcoming deliberative session? Are you feeling ready?
I think we're talking about one of us making a motion and the other one seconding, and whether or not making a motion to reconsider. Do we have to wait a certain amount of time, or no?
No.
What would you like to do?
I'll move you.
Okay.
You can make the motion to restrict reconsideration. And I'll second it.
Thank you much. Administrative update.
Nothing at this time.
Possible non-public sessions?
None.
Motion to adjourn?
Unless you want to recess in case there's any... In case you want to change any of the recommendations depending on if anything's amended at deliberatives. Usually, we would recess and then, if needed, reconvene after the deliberative.
All right. We're in recess.
Come out of recess.
After.
I didn't mean to wake you up.
After, also if you want to...
The time has come at seven o'clock. It's time for our...
Speak up, please.
You want to know who?
Speak up.
Outside voice.
The... If you are having a hearing, you can come up and sit up front here. I'm sure you'd be able to hear. I'll do my best to... We just don't have enough mics, so... All right. Welcome to the 2024 deliberative session. And thank you for taking the time to attend. I am the town moderator, Bruce Tatro. We are broadcasting tonight's meeting live over Zoom. It is being recorded. Although to participate, vote, or make motions, people must be physically present. Some department heads may be participating over Zoom. This evening's meeting is the first session of this year's annual town meeting. The purpose of this session is to determine the form of warrant articles that will be presented to voters at the polls on March 12th. Before we begin this evening's meeting, I'd like to recognize some of the town officials and employees helping out this evening. First, I'd like to recognize the supervisors of the checklist. I don't know, Linda Faulkner, Lee Dunham, and I don't see Linda Hunt, but she's also one of the supervisors. Those present at tonight's session should have checked in before coming upstairs. If you have not checked in, please do so now. Non-voters who are not staff, please be seated in the balcony if you are able. Requests for yes-no paper ballot votes must be submitted prior to an articles vote in writing with the signatures of five voters who are present. If a paper ballot vote is called for, I'll go over the rules at that time. A few announcements and comments by the vice chair of the Board of Selectmen, Sly Karazinski.
Thank you, Bruce. Like Bruce said, the acoustics in here aren't great. We did have a amplified speaker mic system, but when Garrett plugged it in this evening, it went blue. So, we're going to all speak up and try and do that. These mics and the camera are for the recording. So, if you do have a question to ask, I'd ask you to maybe come up here so that that mic could pick it up for the recording, and that way, people at home could hear your question. That being said, all side conversations should take place downstairs or outside because of those acoustics. I'd like to recognize that our chairman, Ken Colby, will be retiring this year after a total of 24 years of service on the Board of Selectmen. And ask that the community thank him for his service. He's not here tonight, and he's home now. Thank you. I'd also like to introduce the town officers and officials. As I said, Ken Colby's at home tonight. I'm Sly Karazinski, vice chair, and Bill Hultwacker is the secretary of the Board of Selectmen. Town administrator, Michael Branley. Town clerk, Heather Estrella. Deputy town clerk, Ashley Patno. Police chief, Joe Gonzalez. Interim fire chief, Eric Mattson. Public works director, Joe DeRusso. Solid waste manager, Josh Whipple. In the back, in the bright yellow. Finance director, Teresa Louder. Tax collector and emergency management director, Kevin Westhop. Assistant town planner, Stephen Stefan Mayhem. And recreation director, Ashley Crosby. If Joe could lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and equal with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first session meeting rules. Handouts, which include the warrant articles and budget items to be considered at this evening's meeting are available in the back of the hall. Want to establish a few guidelines similar to those we have used at past meetings for this evening's session as follows. Before asking a question or making a statement, please make your way to a microphone and identify yourself for the record. If you would like to speak next, please make your way to the lineup. You do not need to wait until the person before you finishes. Also, while as a general rule, non-voters cannot speak without permission of the meeting. At the past meetings, the moderator will allow town staff to provide information or address questions which may arise during the course of the meeting. Item two. Running debate will not be allowed. Remarks and questions should go through the moderator. Everyone should treat each other with respect. If during the meeting you disagree with the ruling of the moderator, you may request that the House be polled. This is the voters' meeting, and the voters may overrule the moderator. With respect to motions for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider will be... I have too many considerations here. Will be considered in order if made within 10 minutes of declaring the results of the original vote. We will be projecting the wording of each article, and we'll forego reading them. When we get to an article, it will be projected, and I will ask for a motion and a second. I will then open the floor for discussion or amendments. Any amendments to an article will need to be submitted to the moderator in writing, and amendments will be voted on one at a time. The amended article will be put on the projector, and them will be debated and voted on. Additional discussion and amendments will then be allowed. When the voters are done with amendments and discussion, I will then call for the vote. Finally, I will declare the results of the vote, and we will move forward to the next item of business. State law requires all articles on the warrant to be voted by official ballot, so motions to pass over or postpone indefinitely beyond the authority of the first session and will be ruled out of order. Article one is the election of officers, and article two is zoning amendments, which do not need to be discussed tonight. Our first item of business will be article three, which is now displayed on the screen.
Bruce, I'll move article three for discussion. Second?
Motion and seconded to move article three. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of article three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Moving on.
Bruce, I'll make a motion to end reconsideration on article three.
Moved and seconded to limit discussion on article three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay, now we're up to article four.
Bruce, I'll make a motion. We move article four for debate.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on article four?
I just have one question on it. Does that include extending the sewer line up there, or is that a different thing? I do not believe so. Initially, it was discussed, but because of the cost of the project, it was taken out. Okay. The garage at the end of it had been fired about that, and we got the first looking at it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Ready for the question? All those in favor of article four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. And it will go as it's written. Article five. Give you a minute to read that.
Bruce, I'd like to make a motion to restrict reconsideration of article four.
Okay. Motion to recons... Yeah, to constrict.
Restrict reconsideration.
Reconsideration. Sorry. I guess the two votes first, so... All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, article five.
Make a motion to move article five for debate.
Second. Okay, we have a motion moved and seconded to move article... I don't want to... Article five. You can't really go left from this angle. Discussion. Sir?
There are any grants you know of that have stolen $500,000, say, in your district?
So, it's a combination between forgivable loans, which are essentially a grant, or tax credits, so we're not fully sure if it's going to be 100% funded, but any cost would be borne by the sewer fund. So, it would be the sewer users that would pay the cost. So, it's expected to have under $100,000 of cost towards the sewer fund.
$100,000 of taxpayer?
Sewer fund, so sewer users.
So, there's no real taxpayer cost?
That's correct.
Anything further? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Bless you.
Can we read first?
No.
Two, two words.
Article six.
Bruce, I'll make a motion. We move article six for debate.
Second.
No, we're going to article six.
Oh. You guys are way ahead of me.
This is $100,000 for the purpose of funding comprehensive facility.
Take my time. Okay, article six. $100,000 for funding comprehensive facility land study of the town's wastewater. Been moved and seconded? Yep. Discussion.
And again, this would hopefully be a forgivable loan up to $100,000, so won't be any direct impact of the taxpayer.
Anyone else comment or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of article six going on the warrant the way it is, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Bruce, I'd like to restrict reconsideration of articles five and six.
Any discussion on restricting votes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay, five and six restricted. Article seven.
Bruce, I'll make the motion that we move article seven for debate.
Second. So, moved and seconded to open article seven for discussion. What's that? What's that?
Yeah, sorry. You can't see it, and I can't.
Ah, I can't. I don't know, we're just kind of going by what's on the screen, and people can...
Just write the numbers down through the whole thing.
Yeah.
But the...
Oh, go ahead.
The budget would total, as written, $7,961,500. Should the article be defeated, the default budget would be $7,468,834, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments created by previous actions of the town or by law or the governing body.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of article seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Bruce, I'll make the motion to restrict reconsideration of article seven.
Okay. Second. The moved and seconded to restrict... Article seven, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article eight. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of by general taxation to be placed in the following expendable trust in capital reserve accounts of the town.
Bruce, I'll make a motion. We move the article for debate.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion.
My name is Norman Scanty. I'm the chair of the Grange Advisory Committee for the town of Swansea, and I move to amend the warrant article eight to increase the amount of the Goldenrod Grange Capital Reserve Fund appropriation by $110,000 for the purpose of replacing the roof structure, roof, rebuilding the windows, and resolving groundwater infiltration into the basement. Basically, I can now speak to that. Yes, that's an amendment, a motion for an amendment. Okay, thanks. Do you want me to speak?
Well, I'll reflect the amendment and make sure that it's ready.
Second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay. I'll be, you know, I'll try and be as brief as I can. In 2022, the selectmen appointed or reappointed, reconstituted the advisory committee, and that committee has been meeting for the past year, looking at the Granges, what the purpose of the Grange is, what grants might be available to restore it. And we've been very active in participating with town staff and others, including the Hampshire Preservation Alliance, to go after some substantial grants. Back in 2020, the town approved money to have Michael Petrovic do a historic building study, and came back with basically the recommendations of about a million-dollar project. So, we realized that as the committee that are advising of the selectmen would be that, you know, we need to work on grants. So, we applied for a CDFI, Community Development Finance Authority, grant. Earlier this year, we were turned down for other projects in the state. We are in a second round right now that we should be hearing from soon. We're also working toward applying for an L-CHIP grant and a moose plate grant, all of which are unknowns at this time. So, without any funding to do the actual historic restoration, we know that there was not going to be a lot of public money to go toward that level of project. So, what we're actually coming with this amendment is to just save the building because right now, the roof is in complete disrepair, and county staff and I know the county staff has had contractors look at the building, and it's estimated that there's about an $85,000 roof repair, including replacing the trusses of the roof, restoration of the windows where they would be restored properly, and taking care of groundwater that has been draining into the building and doing damage. So, really, it's a matter of, you know, if we don't do these emergency repairs, and the roof is not something that can be temporarily repaired, they looked at that and ruled that out, it really needs a full replacement. And that's basically, that's basically it. We will continue as an advisory committee, and staff will continue looking at these grants. And so, that $110,000 may be offset with grant money in the coming year. Can't guarantee it, we don't know, but we're going to try. We're also doing fundraising through our other organization, the Swansea Preservation Society. There's a couple of things we're doing, having some activities for senior citizens. A lot of people have asked, what's the purpose of the building? And the purpose of the building is to be a place for a senior center. Basically, a community center focused primarily on seniors, but other nonprofit groups could use the building as well as the town government as an overflow to town hall.
Point, quite of order. The amendment was to... Was the amendment to raise the appropriation to $110,000 or to add $110,000, which would make it $111,000? It's a minor point, but it's a bookkeeping issue.
This... Study to the... Test of the amendment. The capital reserve fund raised, the capital reserve fund by $110,000 through general taxation. So, I would say that would be in addition to what we are...
So, the budget needs to go up on the screen to $111,000.
So, we had a motion to move and open for discussion. Any further discussion on that? Oh, well, yeah, we're still dealing with the amendment. Any questions on the amendment?
Bob DeRosa. Bob DeRosa's. If you could, that'd be great. Identify yourself, but one of two people will come right over.
Robert DeRosa, East Swansea. First of all, I'd like to ask the selectmen, who's the legal property owner of the Grange?
On record.
A town property.
Is that town? Are you sure? Or is that Grange property?
I believe it's town.
I understand that it was sold to the town for a dollar in 1992, 93?
Is there a record of that?
Imagine.
Yes.
Eileen says yes.
Okay, so that's town property?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, I... It would serve, if it's town property, I'm fully in support of renovating it. Should be done a little bit to a time. And it also should be... Since you're putting that much money into a building, it should be kept open for different purposes and used, and not just be kept closed up so hot. That's my main concern about that.
Thanks, Tom.
I'd like to point one other thing out. Scott's help, you know, we need help with it. That building being renovated and this amendment to that building, it shows that the town supports that building, and it makes it much more feasible that we'll get a grant or the grants that they're applying for if it shows that the town is in support of that building, by putting money into that kind of fund. right, putting money into that kind of fund. And I'm just in support of renovating the building, the town building, if it's an old building, if it's raised, if they take it down, then you don't get it back again.
Name Bruce will handle it on Matthew's Road in Swansea. I'm not in favor of this article. We've got another article coming up with a fire station, and I'd rather see that additional money put into the fire station rather than into this building.
Further?
I'm not waiting to you, Bruce. You all know that I have supported this for the time I've been in Swansea, actually, which is fifty-two years, and I hate to give up easily. And I know we need the fire department. We've always had a fire department and we will have a fire department, I'm pretty sure. And they do get grants. We can't get the grants we need because we are not showing support from our town government. And the building would be of use to the entire town, all sides of the town, as it was when it was first purpose. So I stand very firmly in support of this, and I feel very badly that we've let this building go as long as we have because it speaks for our town. It's right there across from Town Hall. And when people see that it's deteriorating, then there goes our history. There goes our story. What do we tell our future generations? What do I tell my kids and my grandkids? Well, there used to be a Grange there. Your grandfather was a seventy-five-year member, he loved it. And it could have been used for all ages of Swansea population, but we chose to let it go. There you are.
I'd like to say...
Okay, go ahead.
I came here for that, tonight, for that purpose. I'm in the building business myself, been in it for sixty-five years, and when I see the price before there, I thought, God, I'd come in here and see. I gladly would get a crew and build that thing for just the price of the cost of the lumber. And being in the business, I could get a good price on that stuff. And I gladly, I'm sure I could get enough people to help me do it.
I may have missed it, but did you announce who you are and where you are?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Everett Loundon. And I said, I've been in the building business for sixty-five years. I'm, in fact, I'm ninety now and I'm still working in it with people that work in Flumby. And the reason why that I was saying about the fire station, that would help everybody out in this town. And I know there's a lot of people that are not here tonight, and I think that's a shame. I think, I think what we ought to do is that calling these people and not making these means to get to them. I've called with a couple of them and I'd gladly call anybody to help out to build that place.
My name's Jenna Carroll, West Swansea, and with the Historical Society of Teshers County for the past ten years. But one thing I want to add along the lines of the town needing to support, which would also help provide a match for future grants, is the fact that Grange House, there used to be hundreds of thousands across the country, and there's so few left across the country and in our state. So it's not just what's significant for the agricultural history and heritage, I think, of Swansea, but when we look at the Manana region in our state history, I think then applying to Seventeen Twenty-two Foundation or any of these others, that would help support the idea that this is, this is a dying historic entity that is worth preserving for the history of our state as well. So I just want to add that.
Steve Galloway, West Swansea Road, Swansea. I fully support adding the hundred and ten, hundred and eleven thousand dollars to this project. Once that building is gone, it's gone. There's no, you can build a modern reconstruction of it, but that's exactly what it will be, a modern reconstruction. A gentleman over here, a couple of speakers ago, volunteered to assist in the reconstruction. I am certain that there are more contractors in this village, in this community, that will join in and helping him...
I know they will, because I know a lot of them.
To reconstruct and restore, key word, restore, this building. It is our history. And I say our history, even though I'm only a ten-year resident of the community. It is our history. Thank you.
Okay, so we're...
Move the amendment question.
We are voting on the amendment to Article eight, which says that we will increase the appropriation through general taxation by one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Any further discussion? I thought you didn't want to talk.
Well, I was just trying to mention one thing that the first gentleman had mentioned about what he had mentioned. I'm sorry, my name is Wayne Goodwin, and I'm a North Swansea resident. Our intention, I'm a member of the Swansea Preservation Society also, our intention is to get the building back in condition so that we can use it. We are unable to use it right now because of its present condition, and this is what we're, we're trying to avoid. And as time goes on, we will be able to expand from that. But we, it's a tremendous, it's a terrific building and it really, if you've ever been in there, there's a lot of history here, and I think it could do the town a great service for the senior citizens, town meetings, those types of functions. And it's already sitting there in our hands. I mean, to just let the deteriorate rate continue as it is would be a real challenge. That's all I have to say.
Move the question.
Second. All right, we have a motion to move the question. Where's, is that for it now? Okay, all those in favor of amending Article eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
No.
The ayes have it in my limited hearing. I'll tell you, you get the exact number in a minute. So the amendment passes. Any further amendment to this Article eight? Seeing none? Move along?
Just the amendment.
Okay.
As amended.
Yeah, you're right. Article eight as amended is on the screen, and we need to vote on the amended Article eight. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Will be there?
Move for reconsideration on Article eight.
I don't think we're both together, but go ahead.
All those in favor of restricting Article eight, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Make the motion, we move Article nine for debate.
Second.
Okay, Article nine, it's up on the screen and has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on Article nine?
Thanks, Bruce, Dan Hoffman of Swansea. We're up to seven identified and five unidentified speakers, just one, just in case you all keep it dry at home. Relative to this article, I would propose, in alignment with the prior speakers and the last article we had, in order to pay for that in a good faith motion, I would move that this article be changed from six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, a reduction of fifty thousand dollars, not quite half of the prior increase on that Article eight. And my hope is that we get that approved to restore the Grange. My hope is that we have the firehouse under, well under construction by this time next year. If we don't keep an eye on some of this stuff, it's just not going to happen. I'm tired of bringing the firehouse up and down. We've now gone from a three million dollar firehouse to a five million dollar house, firehouse. And this year, we're going to bring it back, which I want to pass it. I'm going to vote for it, but we're going to keep on doing this increasing like this. It's not going to happen by the rest of the townspeople that are not here and continue to not be here. So I think it would be a good faith measure to move this one down fifty thousand dollars and the subsequent Article, Article ten, down an additional fifty thousand dollars and then we're there to pay for the Grange. And I believe that our town administrators, especially Mike and his team, can find that money in both Article nine and Article ten in terms of those items there. Thank you.
I'm hearing correctly, you're moving an amendment to Article nine?
Sir, yes, sir, I would like to amend this article to the six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
I need it in writing, I'm sorry.
Need it in writing and we need it... Have you been working that?
We need to know which line item you would like the money to come from in this particular...
Serious? Okay, buddy, all this is handoff duty, but here's my, here's my quick synopsis. Twenty-five thousand out of the highway and cemetery department, twenty-five thousand out of road rehab and reconstruction department. Is that satisfactory? If you'd like me to write it, I'll be glad to submit that, sign it today.
Yeah, you have to. The rule says that you're, you're supposed to semitic and write it.
Yes, sir?
Make sure I get this right. We have a amendment to eight and nine.
Nine.
Nine? The Article nine to total six hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Yes, sir.
And also to reduce the highway cemetery to one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
What's that? Road rehab and reconditioning will be reduced to three hundred seventy-five thousand?
Yes.
To refurbish?
Road rehab and reconstruction, line item, from four hundred to three seventy-five, sir.
Now, basically, it would reduce the road rehab and reconstruction amount, the expendable trust amount, from four hundred thousand to three hundred seventy-five thousand, and the highway and cemetery equipment reserve fund from two hundred thousand to one hundred seventy-five thousand, a reduction of twenty-five thousand for each, which covers the fifty thousand dollar amendment to reduce that entire article by fifty thousand.
Yes, sir, thank you, Paul.
I'm getting there. I just wanted to... Make sure to read what I... You go second? Okay, we have moved and seconded to amend Article nine with what we just addressed. Further discussion?
Barbara Scully, I'd just like to ask Jonah Russo, what the effect of that would be in this department?
Yeah, Jonah Russo, Public Works Director, I'm obviously not in favor of that. For those who don't, we've been doing a lot improving the roads. Rebuilding a road, it lasts about ten years, and then the cycle starts again on maintenance. All of the cost of materials, especially the asphalt, the cost of fuel, we've built, we've had to shorten projects, we've had to cut a lot out of projects because of the cost of what's going on. It doesn't sound like a lot, but just to arbitrarily remove this money out of these, these line items without taking that into consideration is very important. Especially, like I said, we do have some roads that are at the point of failure right now that we haven't been able to get to. So it doesn't sound like a lot, but I wouldn't be in favor of doing this because it's just going to kick the can down the road further as far as these road repairs and replacement of failing equipment, and like I said, once again, with the cost of everything going on. And like I said, once again, with the cost of everything going up.
Yes, as far as I, one of the, do you have a question for?
Yes, I'd like to start with you, but comments on the motion.
Okay, I saw, I saw a couple of things bring up too. The town's grader and backhoe is going to be, need a replacement in the next two years. And once again, the cost of equipment has just risen greatly. So just take that in consideration when you're considering this amendment.
My name is Martin, I live up on Honey Hill. I, I noticed we had a big flood and the town roads still aren't back entirely. Joe did an amazing job and I want, I would suggest that we give him a round of applause for the work he did. I'm still Steve Rome. I think cutting 25,000 from the roads projects is a little foolhardy, not knowing what roads we are cutting out in terms of not being rehabilitated.
First, I'm the moderator. IP to Lenny to Brown Lane. Could I ask, are there any balances to these funds?
If you have the last page with your handout.
So just for everyone's benefit, on this last page has the list of the funds and then this far right column, estimated balance with the estimated end of year balances. We do have a few more handouts sticking around up here.
And we have a capital reserve, a capital improvement committee that puts these together and meets for months leading up to this. They meet with department heads to get the input about what's needed going forward. So it's a six-year plan, even encompassing further out because, you know, we know some of the big things, the needs that are in ten years, things like that.
So the road rehab fund currently has estimated balance of $377,000. And the highway and cemetery equipment capital reserve fund has an estimated balance of just under 258,000. But as Joe mentioned, 258,000, that might be one used grader. And 377,000 is maybe a mile, a mile and a half of road reviving, so.
Once again, Joe DeRusso, just to, with the cost of the equipment going up. For example, we, last year, we ordered a dump truck. We held off two years on purchasing that dump truck, searching for grants. We applied effortlessly for several grants, the help from town hall, personal help from town hall. We were finally awarded a grant to save $50,000, I believe it was, was it $50,000 off the cost of a dump truck. And like I said, we held off on ordering that even though it was due to be replaced just to seek the grants because the cost of it. A fully outfitted six-wheel dump truck with plow equipment is approximately $225,000. And that's something you can't go without in the middle of a winter storm. You need reliable plow equipment to be able to make the plow work. So we are taking steps trying to save money, but we're barely making ends meet with. For example, we'll be coming up on a grader, a brand-new grader is $670,000. It's nothing we would consider, we'd be searching for appropriate used one to try find one somewhere in the $200,000 range. So it's not like there's a lot of extra money in those accounts.
Are we through discussing the amendments? Is that?
Does that match, Dan, with your, let's reflect the.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I guess we're at the point of article nine amendment. Yeah, reduced by $50,000. Been written out and signed and we've, have all the rules covered, so. Being no discussion, do we have, we don't have to approve this, do we? Okay, all those in favor of article nine?
Not the amendment to article.
Amendment, I'm sorry, amendment to article nine. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, did, did everyone get their voting? All right, I guess we'll have to take a standing vote. All those in favor of amendment to article nine, please stand. Amendment. Are you coming? You got it? Okay, all those opposed the amendment?
Nobody said.
It's obvious.
We sad that they counted, we should, even though it's obvious. And the winner is? What we see, you have the numbers?
Seventeen to fifty-five. Seventeen to fifty-five.
Seventeen. All right, we're back to the original article nine, the amended article nine.
The original nine.
Fail? Ah, I got the numbers for that, sorry. It fails, so what's up there, we're voting no.
Yeah, we're voting the original sum of $675,000.
Can you read it?
We're voting the original sum of 675,000.
All right, any further discussion? Saying no, but all those in favor of article nine, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. So I'm on the warrant.
Make a motion, we, and reconsideration of article nine.
All those in favor of limiting article nine, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Sir, Big Cam from Swansea, we can't hear you, guys. Can we pull out a little bit?
Pull it up and speak up. Sorry, you ain't got no speaker, but we can't hear you, we didn't hear you. We just took a vote and we couldn't hear what your vote on, we're looking in favor. We were voting to restrict reconsideration. This is a boilerplate vote that is taken after votes on each article.
And I do reiterate, although, although there are chairs up here that you can't help but hear us.
Well, either that or let Paul be the moderator. Second?
Did we not say respect?
What a rule out of order given.
What'd you say? I heard a second.
Mr. Moderator, I'll make a motion, we move article 10 for debate.
Second.
The motion made and seconded to approve article 10, any discussion on it?
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion, well, I'll write it up, but I'll make a motion that we reduce article 10 from 300,000 to 200,000 with the 100,000 coming out of the 150, which was designated to come from the undesignated fund balance.
I'll second that.
Second?
Just give me a minute to write it.
Oh, we're talking about amending.
I'm gonna, let me, let me write it up here because I'm getting some clarification that might be helpful. So basically, it's to reduce it by 100,000 with the 100, from, from 300,000 to 200,000 with the 100,000 coming from the amount that would be raised by taxation.
And if you, anybody wants to see it, why we had trouble with the past one, it's not legible. You know, it took two of us to figure it out. So if you're going to propose an amendment, make sure it's legible and signed by at least two voters. Okay, the amendment, article 10, appropriation to $200,000. Being $100,000 reduction to come from, I challenge anybody to read this.
One hundred thousand, amount to be raised by taxation.
To be raised by taxation, making the amendment to be raised from taxation to $50,000. Michael, is that? Discussion?
So it's basically, it's an accounting, accounting term where when you either underspend the budget or overcollect revenues, it gets accounted for basically with the general fund. We don't want to call it surplus, but when there's money left over at the end of the year, it carries over.
So it's a town's general fund?
I'm sorry?
It's a town's general fund?
It's part of the general fund, right. Correct, so only the voters can appropriate from it or the selectmen can use it to pay down the tax rate.
So what's the balance of that?
We won't know until we get our audit for 2023. If our finance director wants to try to estimate it this time.
Just even a lot of something I can't see or even though it's part of the general fund and it's always a, it's a plenty of number, is there enough money in it?
For this article, yes, it's something we're comfortable with. We wouldn't recommend increasing it significantly from what's already proposed.
Danny Hoffman of Swansea, again, just want to just acknowledge Selectman Hutt Walker for taking that step. I think that's the right thing to do. This, this pan for the grant thing, and as I said before, if you didn't catch it, it's a principle of the matter for me. And what I hope to do is gather support from the rest of our townspeople so that we can get all of these articles passed, all of them. That's what I want. It's not going to kill me one way or the other, just to be a little bit frank, but I want them all to pass. I don't want them, you know, some significant portion to continue to fail. And therefore, we have buildings in disrepair or emergency responders that are, you know, call it suffering for services and to do their job when I need to call them. I don't need them to pause or wait or wonder where they're going to go through decon, okay? This is a responsible measure and I appreciate Selectman Hutt Walker for taking that action, thank you.
My colleague here joined with me on that, so, yes.
He twisted my arm though.
Yeah, there are two. You got something to add on this, on this article? On the amendment to the. We've already done the building stuff. Anything further on the amendment? Saying no, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, the amendment passes. Now we're back to the original, original article.
As amended.
As amended. Does everybody understand what we're doing? Good job. Okay, article 10.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Appropriate 200,000. We've already, we've already approved this, so we just got to have to approve the change? We've already, we've already approved this, so we just gotta have to approve the change.
No, we just approve the change and we now have to vote the article.
Article now reads to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000 to be placed in the fire station's capital reserve fund. Such sum to be raised by $150,000 by, uh, by $50,000 by taxation and $150,000 from the undesignated fund's balance. Important codicil on this, if Article Three passes, which is the fire station article, this article becomes null and void.
All of them?
Okay, so we're at voting?
Yep.
All those in favor of amended Article Ten, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bruce, I'd like to...
Article pass.
I'd like to propose we limit reconsideration of Article Ten.
They made a motion and seconded to restrict reconsideration, so you'd be voting on that.
Ah. Not elected.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bruce, I make a motion, we move Article Eleven to the floor for debate. Okay, Article Eleven has been moved to the floor for debate. Any discussion on Article Eleven?
Who's the question?
Okay, Article Eleven as written on the screen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bruce, I'll make a motion to limit reconsideration of Article Eleven.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bruce, I make the motion that we move Article Twelve to the floor for debate.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Article Twelve on for debate. Anyone wish to discuss it?
Bruce, I'll talk to this a little bit. Basically, what we'd like to do is put away a little money right now, if anybody's been following the ambulance situation. Federal money is basically softening the blow as we go toward Cheshire EMS, our ambulance provider. So the second bid that we had from Rescue Inc. was much higher in the $300,000 range per year. So we're in the 40, 60, 80 phase right now, the end of the third year. It could go up quite a bit, so we'd like to put, put away some money from the fund balance, uh, basically to save for that day in case we need it, to soften the blow and
Anybody else? Okay.
Nope. Mark, no.
I pay to land two brown lanes. I'm having trouble figuring out this fund balance, that we keep drawing from, and we don't know how much is gonna be there at the end of the year. What if in fact we approved all of these drawings from this, this, this fund balance that's obviously a general fund and the money's not there, is it gonna be a taxation to the Because right here on Article Twelve, you've got this rough number, $180,000 in the next three years.
The Department of Regulatory Administration requires us to keep a certain amount of fund balance. Because our calendar year is January to December. You guys vote in March. We still have bills to pay, payroll and...
I think it was 1.7 or 1.8 million as of the end of the last audit, so 2022. So it's, you know, a couple hundred thousand is not, is not material in terms of a tax impact. It might, if we, if we spent it down too much, wouldn't be able to use it in future years, but it's not, not something that would have a direct impact. And I was reminded, it's also, that 1.7 million also includes unpaid taxes, so it's not all cash. So it's a combination of cash, cash and deferred revenue.
Anybody else?
Who's the question?
Okay, all those in favor of Article Twelve as written, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article Twelve pass.
I'll make a motion, we limit further reconsideration of Article, Article Twelve.
Motion from me to limit further discussion or action on Article Twelve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You're reading.
Well, recess.
That it?
Yeah, recess.
Thanks, John.
You gotta tell them. You gotta tell them.
Okay, let's see, that's our business tonight. See you, see you at Golden. All those in favor of adjourn, say aye. Before we all leave, I, I just want to tell you, as, as a selectman for 10 years, this has been one of the most incredible evenings of, of my time. It, it's just so great to see that so many of you would take the time and, and put forth the energy in your comments. This is absolutely fantastic, so I ask you to give yourselves a round of applause. You've done a great job.
We're out of here. Go ahead. I'll have the board of selectmen meeting back in session.
Okay, I, there's nothing that was discussed tonight or quoted on that I would want to change. I'm, I'm comfortable with the, with the warrant as it is. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we direct the town clerk with the town administrator to draft a resolution in recognition of Ken's 24 years of service as a, as a selectman for the, for the two decades or three decades that he participated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone further? Motion adjourned?
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you.